All right, I think we're back. We're gonna reconvene. I appreciate everyone's presence. Let me start, colleagues. One of the things that we said we would do is confer on the specifics of the law regarding the vote on the budget. And after conferring with the board's general counsel, the board's executive director, and all the councils that are part of the county executive, it seems abundantly clear to me that in order to amend the proposed budget by the CEO, it's gonna require a two-thirds vote. Now, the way that the law reads is that any proposal from the CEO requires a two-thirds vote. Now, after we pass this budget, and it goes to the county council, and then it comes back to the board after the county council has given us the budget parameters, it is no longer a CEO's proposal, it is our budget. And any other changes that we would make at that time, which will happen in...when does it come back to us? June? We vote in June, when does it come back to us? Comes back to us sometime before that?
End of May.
End of May. So, the budget that comes back to us at the end of May, if it requires any reconciliation, we will go through that process with the administration, but any changes at that point would require a simple majority vote of the board. So, what I'm gonna do now is ask the CEO and his team to describe to us how that those adjustments were made to balance the budget, and then we will revote on the amendment.
So, just procedurally, Dr. Eubanks, if you don't pass it with a two-thirds, then the cuts aren't there. You wanna...do you not wanna take a vote first? Reconsider your vote the first time?
No, 'cause then we're just...if we voted that, and it passes, then we gotta listen to what you said and revote again. So, I wanna...at this point, I wanna hear your...what your budget proposal is. 'Cause otherwise...
Did I understand you to say the motion failed? 'Cause in consultation with council during the break, and our council, I know, has discussed with your council, the motion with the votes that you currently have did not pass.
So, that's true, I'm gonna revote. But I'm gonna...so, are you telling...you're gonna make me revote before I hear your proposal? 'Cause I can do that, but the motion's gonna pass it. I mean, I can tell you now, I would change my vote. But I wanna hear what you have to say, though.
So...so, the adjustments that you're going to approve, I guess, come...they total $726,193, just shy of three-quarters of a million dollars. And we have identified offsetting cuts in a number of areas of the school district. Dr. Joseph, teaching and learning first, please.
Sure. So, I've identified $131,000 in cuts, which will include one FTE from my office. From my...within my office.
Which...and what...can you tell us what that FTE was doing? What that FTE was?
Sure. That FTE...that FTE was providing technical support for our STEM work within the district.
Thank you.
Dr. Golson?
I will cut $296,854 from the chief of operations budget. That will be the chief of supporting services position, and $100,000 in educational software.
Chief of supporting services?
Correct.
Can you tell...can you...what does the chief of supporting services do?
That was...that is Al Collins' position.
Excuse me?
That was Al Collins'. That is Al Collins' position. That's what transportation, building services, food nutrition, security services used to report...that's who they report to. I'm cutting that position.
Thank you.
I will be cutting $104,589 for school-based budgeting, which equals one FTE from a school.
It's gonna just depend on what...essentially be just minus one FTE in the school-based budgeting?
Well, the majority of school-based budgeting money is used for positions, for schools to purchase positions. And so, undoubtedly, there will be an offset of a position somewhere in the school-based budgeting realm.
Thank you.
And then the balance, remaining balance, again, each of these divisions has made adjustments in the budget reconciliation for the last couple of years, and we've offset the remaining of the $726,193 from the budget of the Board of Education office, one position and its benefits, and a reduction in your catering, your awards, and certificates, and your non-local travel.
And what's the amount?
$193,750.
All right, folks, that is what is on the board. We've debated this extensively, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Wilson to call the roll. We're revoting on the motion.
And the motion was to add two additional reading specialists and five additional math specialists to the...
Yes. So, I just wanna make sure that we, you know, revote, given a new understanding.
Dr. Anderson? Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
I brought my dinner tonight. Aye.
Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Hernandez?
No.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yep.
Ms. Quinteros-Grady?
No.
Ms. Roche?
No.
Mr. Valentine?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Boston? Dr. Eubanks? Eight ayes, sir.
Thank you, that's eight ayes. This motion required nine ayes, so that motion fails. Mr. Burrows?
Mr. Chair, I first wanna say, I wanna thank Dr. Joseph, Dr. Golson, and Dr. Davis for your hard work. I'm very sorry to hear that those cuts were the ones that were scheduled to be made, because there are a lot of other areas in the system that don't touch kids that could have gone first. And so, I'd like to move to cut two positions out of the chief of strategic and external affairs. I'd like to move to cut two positions out of the chief of staff's budget, two positions out of the communications department, actually, four positions out of communications, four positions out of the chief external and external affairs, and four out of the chief of staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Wallace, now we'll open up the debate. Go ahead.
Just a good question to my good friend and colleague. What exactly are those positions? I wanna look into budget and the titles.
So, to be clear, we don't have the authority to cut any particular title.
Okay, okay.
In fact, we don't technically have to. I mean, they can create the positions, we would just be cutting money from the budget.
Okay. If you don't have the answer, I respect that, but do you know the amount? Just rough ballpark?
I want...okay, let's do $200,000 out of each of those departments. Or $500,000. I'm okay with...the problem is, as I mentioned earlier, whenever there's time to create a chief position, there's always money. And I'm just confused as to why they had to cut instructional positions in order to accommodate other instructional positions. It makes no sense to me. I know the chief external and external affairs just got a raise and is now making $159,000. That just doesn't make sense to me. And so, I think we should do an across-the-board cut of $200,000 or more, I'm open to going higher, in each of these areas.
So, I'm...you know, that's vague. Give me a motion. So, are you moving to cut those specific positions, or are you gonna make a dollar amount?
Just being honest.
So, give me a number.
$200,000 out of the chief external affairs.
Okay.
$200,000 out of communications.
Take your time, wait. $200,000 out of chief of external affairs, $200,000 out of communications.
$200,000 out of the chief of staff's budget. And...I'll leave it at that for now, but colleagues, I encourage you to make other cuts after this, but let's just see how this goes.
That's the motion you second? That motion, correct?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr....Dr. Maxwell?
It won't surprise you that the administration opposes those arbitrary and capricious cuts, which in the chief of staff's office, for example, will include the ombudsman and his staff, which you just added at your request, at the board's request. So, as you just arbitrarily make random suggestions for cutting things, remember, each of these people provide a service to the system, and you have some authority over some of those positions, and you have no authority over other ones.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows?
As Dr. Maxwell was speaking, I thought of another area to cut. $200,000 out of the...
So, wait a minute. Your motion has been moved and seconded.
Okay, I'll make another one later.
Thank you.
But to...just to his point, it seems like we arbitrarily create positions, and because of the lack of communication or teamwork between the system and the board, we don't understand why there's no rationale, there's no communication. And so, I would urge my colleagues to vote for this.
Mr. Wallace?
I am not a member of the Fab Committee, and, you know, new to this, this is my first budget, but I am a member of the community engagement committee. I know that's one of our charges as a board. And so, I'm yielding to my chair of my committee, Mr. Valentine, and looking for your suggestion here on this motion in terms of cutting an ombudsman that deals with constituent affairs and the...in the office of chief and external affairs that deals a lot with our parent university. What is your recommendation as my committee chair? I think it's clear the importance of an ombudsman. It's clear the importance of an office that fully communicates with parents about the system, that advocates on behalf of parents for the system. And so, this position, someone who has been a teacher, an administrator, a principal, and a superintendent, someone who we voted to approve, who we thought would further our system's parental engagement, because when you look at literacy, and impact of literacy, parental engagement is just as big and important part of literacy as literary coach. Whether you're reading to your child at night, whether you're exposing your child to vocabulary at a very early age, before they even get to our schools, these are things that an ombudsman, through his office and through relationships with school leaders, will improve. You all know the importance of fatherhood that I have and that I put forth in this system, 'cause I understand the impact and the achievements that come with parental engagement. So, I would oppose any cut to the ombudsman position, and I believe that there are a lot of parents who may not be here tonight, who would be here tomorrow advocating for that position, once they found out that we cut it tonight.
Thank you for that answer. Ms. Perry?
No, I understand that...I see your point. I see your point. Right now, it seems like you're trying to take off what appears in your eyes to be something that's top-heavy, but I know that communications is very important. I know a lot of our requests and a lot of our complaints that come into us regard communications, in that there isn't a proper system, or this happened between this person, and she filed this, but it didn't get...it didn't go through, and now we're not...so, communication has been something that we've been trying to promote. I do understand your point, though, right? We're talking about directly...no, we're talking about funding positions that directly impact students on a day-to-day basis, right? That's what we're talking about. That's what this past few votes have been for, and apparently, I guess, the last one failed. But that vote, and this is still relating to this vote as well, that vote was to fund positions that directly impact students on a daily basis. The only thing that will officially increase our SAT scores, our AP scores, and all the scores that we decide to test are us, me, me on, me, right? Me and my classmates. And so, I get what you're saying, but Ed, I don't think...let's...you gotta...I don't think that was these three...I heard communications, I heard external affairs, and chief of staff. Let's think about it a little bit more. I don't think you wanna do commi...I wouldn't touch communications. It's something that comes in a lot for us, that says, oh, we need to improve communications. And I know I've spoken directly with the head of communications, that they are doing some really good work, but I mean...but then again, it is up to the administration, right, to see where exactly those cuts come from. So, I'm not sure where that would come from, but in hearing where the cuts come from now, when you guys came back with the, you know, your...yeah, with your proposal, your new proposed budget, it just sounded like you're cutting more positions that directly influence student achievement, when we're trying to do that exact thing, we're trying to promote student achievement, and we're trying to promote positions that directly impact students. And you just said, Dr. Joseph, you just said you have seen...promising work, you have seen progress with these literacy coaches. And now that we've, you know, we made our vote, and apparently it was invalid, because we didn't have a majority, and it's supposed to be two-thirds, and we missed by one vote, but now it seems like we're about to cut back from the people who are directly impacting our students on a day-to-day basis. But Ed, we gotta think through what you're about to do, okay? You have to think through that, 'cause I don't know if that's the right step, okay?
Thank you. Ms. Epps?
So, the education article of the annotated Code of Maryland, as changed in April of 2013, states that the purpose of the county board is to, number one, raise the level of academic achievement of the students in the Prince George's County Public School System, and, number two, raise the level of engagement of the parents, students, and the community as a whole. That's what the law says. The proposals that have been presented tonight are looking to do just that, to the tune of $700,000, not even a million, but let's just say that we paid them well. So, we are talking about $1 million of a $2.2 billion budget proposal. The administration had an opportunity to make a proposal about where that...those cuts were gonna come from, and what came back. Positions in teaching and learning, positions in operations to get students to the teaching and learning, and positions that affect principals and that kind of thing, which, again, is teaching and learning. So, I think the message is very clear. Budgets are statement documents, make no mistake about it. Same budget that's happening up in Annapolis, those are...you get to see what the governor and what the General Assembly, what their priorities are, what they believe in for the state of Maryland, and it's no different here. I think the members of this board have tried to raise the level of academic achievement of the students in Prince George's County Public School System, and raise the level of engagement of the parents and students and the community as a whole. But this whole entire process, when you think about those two items and those two mandates, the message is very clear. My charge to all of you here who have assembled is to tell your friends, this is an election year, you have the county executive, you have your county council, you have your Prince George's delegation, and the state house and senate. Because of the people that you put there, this is what you end up with.
We have myself, Ms. Boston, and Ms. Jacobs still on the list. So, colleagues, this is an interesting exercise that we're pursuing this evening, and I'm not going to play the game of who cares about kids more. Each and every one of us are here, 'cause we deeply care about the children that we serve. The fact that we have dramatically different opinions about how to do that work is why life is so hard to begin with, is why we're all human. Now, we're getting ready to pass, if this budget passes, a $2 billion budget. The only possible way we'll get what we want, cuts or no cuts, additions or no additions, is for our county council to make a dramatically bold move to raise revenues, which we do not predict will happen. So, to my colleague, Mr. Burrows, we're gonna have a lot of time to figure out which positions to cut, 'cause we're gonna be back here. This is fun work that we're doing now. This is fun work that we're doing now, trying to figure out, you know, how we're gonna add more positions to the budget. The work is gonna get difficult, my friends, in a few weeks, when we have to decide what we're gonna do about the fact that we have to cut the programs that we're already doing. Which programs are in your schools today that we're gonna have to cut? That's gonna be the question we're gonna be answering in a few weeks. Which positions are we gonna cut? Because until or unless we have a significant change of heart about a commitment to fund education at the level of debate...I wish we were really debating about what to spend $2 billion on. I would vote for a lot of this stuff if I thought we were really debating about what to spend $2 billion on, but we're not, because, you know, if we get $2 billion, I'll come back here and I'll do a dance right there in the middle of that. Everyone come back, I'll do a dance right here in the middle, until y'all tell me to stop. So, you know, the idea that we're gonna cut arbitrarily now, I think, is unwise, but the idea, Mr. Burrows, I will sit down with you personally and spend the hours that it takes to figure out what the right priorities are for us, because we're gonna have to make some really hard choices in the weeks and months to come. Ms. Boston?
I wanna call for the question.
The question has been called. By rule, the people still on my list get to speak. Ms. Jacobs?
You know, this is really an exercise in futility, unfortunately, because the reality is, none of this feels like it's about the budget. It just feels so divisive. And the budget, this budget that we're talking about, actually belongs to the people that's sitting out in the audience and the community at large. And so, we cannot ever get to where we need to get for kids if there's so many egos and so many who's got power and who doesn't have power. Power grabs, for the sake of a power grab, does not do anything for kids. And that's really what this is about. So, the reality is, if you have power to do something, that's fine, but that shouldn't take away from still communicating and doing what's right and bringing people to the table. We should not be divided, and we're divided because of who has power and who doesn't, when the reality is, it should be about how can we together do what's right for kids? And it's not necessarily about who cares for kids most, but when adults fail, kids fail. And that's what's happening right now. And until this board and superintendent team decides to come together, we all have ideas. None of us are the smartest people in the room. We think we are sometimes, but we're not. Everybody has something to offer. We all have something to offer. And right now, as long as we stay in this mode of the CEO has this power and the board has that...who writes a law that's designed to be divisive? You don't do it designed to be divisive, you bring people together. And so, I just really feel like, at this point, we can throw out motion after motion after motion, knowing how the vote is gonna go, for whatever reason, not in putting anybody under indictment or judging people, but to say that this situation right here is not even about the budget. It's about who has the most power, and that's not good for kids, period. So, we can talk about reconciliation, and we can come back here in June and be having the same divisive conversation, and that's not good for kids, period. So, our challenge should be, our challenge really should be, how are we gonna come together as a team and stop this foolishness, really, about power? Because everybody has something to offer. We all can do this together, regardless of who the letter of the law says power belongs to. And I challenge the citizens, this is your budget, and you need to hold us accountable for your budget. Hold us accountable.
Ms. Wilson, please call the roll.
Certainly, for clarification, sir. This motion is to move to cut $200,000 from the chief of strategic and external affairs, $200,000 from the communications department, $200,000 from the chief of staff department or office. Dr. Anderson? Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Hernandez?
No.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. Quinteros-Grady?
No.
Ms. Roche?
No.
Mr. Valentine?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
No.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Boston? Dr. Eubanks?
No.
Nine nays, three ayes.
Thank you. That motion fails. Ms. Williams? Thank you.
After listening to all of the policies and procedures and all these things, that I think we're all trying to get to the same end result. But if we're talking about, when we put this on the timeline of where we stand today, this is the CEO's budget. When it comes back, it's gonna be our budget, and at that point, we have about a month to figure this out, so when it comes back, we can give them clear direction. As I've been talking to the community about school closures, I've been saying to them, if you want chocolate cake, you can say, hey, I want Dr. Maxwell, bring me chocolate cake. He'll bring me chocolate cake, and I'll say, no, I don't like it, try again. He'll bring it to me again, and I say, no, I don't like it. But if I say to him, I want German chocolate cake with Dutch chocolate icing and strawberries, he knows specifically what I want. And so, we've been doing that throughout this budget season, trying to be very specific about what we want, and I think...
I'm sorry, there's no motion on the table. Are you gonna make a motion?
I'm gonna get to...it's not...oh, the motion is still on the table?
No, there is no motion on the table.
No, but I just wanted to...
So, that's why, I mean, we...
This is just my comment on trying to get done tonight. I think we should pass this budget the way it is, and when we come back to, after the reconciliation, we look at these specific things that we're looking for, because at this point, I see it's gonna be an exercise in frutility, and then when we come back, I don't think that we're gonna get to the end result, so...
Is that a motion to move to pass the budget as it is?
That's my motion.
Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded to pass the budget as is. Is there...Ms. Jacobs?
I just had a question for clarification. Can you...I'm thinking about the fact that some parents that they receive letters about whether or not their school was gonna be...or their kid may go to somewhere else. Does this current budget includes the closure...
be, or their kid may go to somewhere else. Does this current budget includes the closure of schools? Does the budget, as it's, does it includes the closure of the schools?
No, it does not.
It does not?
It does not.
So then my question would be, if the decision is made to close the schools, would that be part of the reconciliation process?
Yes, ma'am.
That would be submitted. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows.
So, John, just to be clear, this budget does not include any school closures? And so should the public believe that tonight we're...
There were no specific line items indicated in this budget as a reduction from, as it went forward, as the superintendent, CEO's proposed budget.
And so, as the public, I just want to be clear, so the public should believe, and I should believe, that what's going over to the county council includes Skyline and Forestville?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there was an earlier motion to approve the budget, so a second motion is not necessary.
Right, so we're back to the fir... so the point was, they're, they're ready to move to a vote on this, on, on, on the original motion.
Right.
Right, because there was no, because none of the amendments, right, none of the amendments passed. So it's basically the original motion. And I see no other slips in debate, no other wanting to debate this, so I will call the roll.
No.
Mr. Burrows?
Absolutely not.
Ms. Epps?
No.
Ms. Ubanks?
Um, when you say the original budget, are we talking about the budget where they made changes?
No.
No. No, this is the original...
This is the, this is to pass the budget, the budget that's before us.
Oh, Adam, sit to the right, hold up.
Would you like to pass, Ms. Ubanks?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobs?
No.
Ms. Quinteros-Grady?
Yes.
Ms. Roche?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Ubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Ubanks? Nine ayes, four nays.
Thank you. That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we still have business to conduct, and we have no items on number seven, so we'll move on to item number eight, governance, second readers, unfinished business. I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of item 8.1 under governance, unfinished business.
Thank you, Dr. Ubanks. Item 8.1 requires board approval to name the Gwin Park High School Stadium and Football Field, the Mary P. Cunningham Stadium, and delegate James Proctor Jr. Football Field.
May I have a motion? Mr. Valentine?
Okay. All right, it's been moved to accept item 8.1 under governance, second reader.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Valentine?
Dr. Maxwell, can you just discuss the process of how stadiums and fields are, the names of stadiums and fields are conducted? The board requires not just the naming of schools to be approved by the board, but unlike many boards, which allow schools to make decisions regarding their field houses and their theaters and auditoriums and things, the board is required here to approve those things. The community was engaged in this conversation. The community is supportive of this recommendation, and there was a committee, I think, that, you know, looked at it. Dr. Golson?
Yes, there's a committee comprised, in this case, of Gwin Park High School, that was made up of community members, parents, and students of existing, that are existing members of the Gwin Park High School community. They submitted to the CEO, in order of their preference, the three names for the stadium and the field, all of which were, in some shape or form, the use of Mary P. Cunningham name and the honorable Proctor, James Proctor.
All right, seeing no other lights to speak, Ms. Wilson, please call the roll.
Dr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Ubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. Quinteros-Grady?
Aye.
Ms. Roche?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Ubanks?
Aye.
You have 14 ayes, sir.
Thank you. That motion carries. I'll now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items 9.1 through 9.3 under new business first reader.
Thank you, Dr. Ubanks. Items 9.1 to 9.3 require board approval, and do not require discussion or debate. First is a site feasibility analysis for the new Northern Area Middle School 1 and 2, approval and acceptance, board policy, 1600, establishment of the offices, ombudsman and ombudsman services, and board policy, 9260, bylaws of the board auditor.
Thank you. Colleagues, may I have a motion to pass items 9.1 through 9.3 under new business first readers? It's been moved and seconded. No further discussions. Do folks want to talk about this?
I just wanted to separate out 9.1 and put on it separately, but it's okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry, that's already been moved, yeah, that's already been moved and seconded for all three of them. You had a question about one of them?
That's fine. I just wanted to, a buzzed in, as we were finishing 8.1 for 9.1, but it's fine.
All right, all right. Mr. Valentine, did you?
I, I just wanted some clarification on 8, 9.2, around the establishment of the office of the ombudsman, and just asked Mr. Mark Golis to update us on the, the new ombudsman and what he has done since he's been in his position.
A lot. And it's been a soft launch, and the hard launch is gonna actually start as of Monday. And in tomorrow's memo from the CEO, hopefully you're gonna be getting a lot more material in response, actually, to what you've just asked, Mr. Valentine. But the office has been set up completely, and what has been the last piece has been the establishment of the website, which is about to go live. And that website has everything from the many linkages, frequently asked questions, a brochure, which will be online, but we're actually having printed this week to be distributed to all schools, including suggestions for effective communications, and options and solutions, and a trifold, which will be printed and distributed to all schools. But one of the things that held it up was two things, actually, translations of these documents to get onto the website, as well as the IT office getting the new tracking document put onto the website and live, and that delayed it. But in the meantime, the office has been working assiduously out there handling complaints, some of them referred from the old constituent services office, but staff is in place, staff has been more than trained to deal with concerns and complaints, and have brought to their office. And like I say, there's been a soft launch over the last couple of weeks, but it'll be now publicized through the website, linked through the listing of office services. We're gonna share that with the board office through, hopefully, tomorrow's memo sent out to the schools. They've been meeting with the area offices and instructional directors, and like I say, the hard launch will be next week.
Can you talk just a bit about the staff and who's supporting them and what they do?
Yeah. The staff has been, well, besides Dr. Newsom, who is the ombudsman, there's two other individuals who were brought on to staff the, the office. Consuela Robinson, who has a social work, people personnel work background, who had most recently worked in Montgomery County, superb individual, and who's bilingual, I should add, one of the attributes we were looking for to staff the office. Carlisa Finney, who most recently had worked in Anarunal County, and who has a long background working in conciliation, disputes, EO, and equity matters, who Dr. Maxwell and I both had long experience working with in Anarunal County, as well as the support staff, individual, Nise Ellis, who had worked in one of our charter schools here in the county, who came there. So they make up the office. They're located out at the old Green Valley Administration School, which, as many of you know, has been retrofitted over the last year to house a number of our administrative components. And they're housed there, so it's to be a little independent from this building and the people they have to deal with, where parking is prevalent for parents and community members to go out to and to have some neutrality, not have to be seen necessarily coming into this building, although they'll be in rear wheels going out to other school buildings and offices, transportation, speciality, and elsewhere from time to time to conciliate matters. So they're working. And like I say, it's been a soft launch the last few weeks. The last of the staff wasn't actually brought on until the beginning of January into that office. So that's where we are.
Just thank you. I met with Dr. Newsom, and he has agreed to brief, brief our community on a regular basis in support of opening, making sure that office is functioning fully. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And one of the last pieces, I should say, was the actual revision of the policy that previously existed for constituent services, to change it over to ombudsman. It was brought to Ms. Jacobs' committee. That's what this is first reading on. We'll bring it back for second reading in March. Concurrent or consistent with it, maybe is a better term, is the more meaty administrative procedure. And also, we have protocol calls to implement the administrative procedures. All that will be on the website, and you'll be able to see it as of Monday.
Mr. Wallace?
Just had a quick follow-up question to my colleague, Mr. Valentine. And I hear you write that the location of the ombudsman office is in Green Valley?
Green Valley, the old Green Valleys. It was an old Green Valley Elementary School, now being used in administrative offices.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for placing that in, in my district. And I know that one of the things that, in terms of community outreach, is making sure that our buildings are accessible to all of our constituents, not just those who have vehicles. And so I'm glad this is in a central location that is, that is metro accessible as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no further discussion, so I'll call to question. All those in favor of items 9.1 through 9.3 under new business, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Thank you. That motion carries. Follow-up items, 11.1, follow-up items from the January 19, 2016 board work session, and the February 9, 2016 board work session are posted in board docs. Follow-up items from the January 21 board meeting, February 4, board work session meetings will be posted in board docs upon receipt. Colleagues, I will now entertain a motion to approve actions taken in executive session on Thursday, February 25, 2016.
Still moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve items taken in executive session on February 25, 2016, as follows, personnel appointments, administrative matters, and legal matters. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you. Colleagues, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry. Dr. Anderson, my apologies.
I, I just want to make a note for the record, that it's outrageous for us to think that what we agreed to, to send a board budget forward, is a budget where eight out of 13 people wanted to make an amendment to the budget, but were not permitted to do so. So let's just lay it out there for what it is. It's going forward, but with the note that eight board members wanted to make an addition, an amendment to that budget, and were deprived of the opportunity to do so. So please put board in parenthesis. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. We are adjourned. Please go home safely.